Hi, good day, everybody. It's Mary Rowe, President and CEO at the Canadian River Institute. I just had a moment of chill looking at that holding slide that I think we've been using since the beginning of our candid conversation series, Cities in the Time of COVID. Just reminds me how long we've been at this. Although I appreciate that, I think that was a shot of Calgary, councillor Farrell, and I appreciate that you have been known to have snow at this time of year. I don't think you have any today, but I'm hoping it's not
Not quite.
Not quite, but I'm hoping it's not snowing anywhere at the moment, but it still could, as we know. But it's also just a reminder of how long we've been at this, how long have we been having these conversations? I think we're in our 11th or 12th week of lockdown, and these City Talk conversations have been really instrumental, I hope, in us trying to make sense of what's going on. We originate these broadcasts in Toronto, which is the traditional territory of the Mississauga with credit, the Inishinaab, and the Chipewa, and the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and it's now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples from across Turtle Island. Toronto is also covered by Treaty 13, which was signed with the Mississauga with the credit, and the Williams Treaty is signed with multiple Inishinaabic nations. I think this is a really poignant moment for us in Canada, in Canadian cities, trying to come to terms with and, I think, reckon with our history and the way in which our cities have formed up and reflected various components of that history, good and bad. And I'm sobered by what cities around North America are dealing with this week and last week, and that is happening here in Canada as well, and how fortunate we are to have these city council members come and talk to us about what they're seeing on the ground during COVID, what they anticipate need to be the changes that COVID may bring about in the way that we make cities and the way we live together. We always acknowledge that the crisis isn't over, and there are thousands and thousands of Canadians still engaged in first-line response. Many of them work for municipal governments, many will be constituents of these four, saving lives, trying to keep people safe, so we never want these conversations to supplant that. But we always ask that these be candid conversations. It's hard, I think, for a city council person because they have a constituency to which they're accountable, they have council colleagues, and they work in a particular kind of governance system, but we're asking you to be as candid as you can. These sessions are recorded, and we have a very active audience that participates in the chat function. And we also, just for those of you that are posting in the chat, you already know this, we print the chat. We post the chat afterwards, we post the video of this conversation, and we pull out key takeaways. So we hope everyone will do that, and we hope you'll share your insights and your observations and where you'd like to participate in this ongoing conversation about cities in the time of COVID. You can do that at hashtag CityTalk. So as I suggested, I think it's a somber moment. We at CUI had put up some platforms during COVID to try to highlight the smart things that municipal governments were doing, that citywatchcanada.ca, and also the resourceful things that community leaders and institutions were doing, and that's citysharecanada.ca, and those continue to live on and continue to be populated by volunteers. But now I think all of us are watching on social media and on television, and we're listening to the radio, however we're getting our news, and we can see the fractures that were evident in urban life before COVID, now completely being exposed and people just expressing their unwillingness to tolerate the kinds of things that have not been working in urban life for lots and lots of people. So I'm interested to have these council members join us and give us their perspectives, literally on the ground, what they're observing, as I suggested, and what they're anticipating. So we always start these things with the sort of 90-second opening. I'm conscious that two of our council members, English is not their first language, and I am a horrible fast talker, so I will try to not do that, but it's really your turn, all you folks, to talk, so you can talk at the speed at which you're comfortable in English, and we appreciate you joining us. So councillor Farrell, I'm going to start with you. Hope you're all right if I call you Drew.
Of course.
Drew, you're in Calgary, and just talk to us about what you've been seeing in Calgary and the challenges that you're facing right now. Thank you.
Calgary has been going through what we know as the crisis system. So we saw this during the 2013 flood, where the initial response to a crisis was kindness, people helping each other, almost a sense of, not euphoria, but cooperation, participation. And then we see a downturn in the public mood, sort of a disillusionment. And I think we're in that point now where people are getting exhausted, expressing a significant amount of anxiety. We're having interesting conversations about what kind of city we want when we recover, what does a recovery look like, and should we look back to normal? I think you're seeing a tension between people who want to return to normal and people who are recognizing that normal wasn't good enough. We need to build back better. And so we're having that conversation now, and it's a difficult one. And then marry that with the stresses that we're seeing in the States. And we saw one of the biggest protests I've seen on the streets of Calgary, Black Lives Matter and the whole discussion around equity. And so these are uncomfortable conversations, but they're absolutely necessary, and we need to look forward. Thank you, and thank you for having me today.
No, no, we've been appreciative. You know, the Urban Institute, we say we're in the connective tissue business, and we've been really intentional on trying to make sure we have voices from across the country as best we can. We don't have the Atlantic region today. It's hard, and you've only got four slots to get the whole country represented, but
I do want to acknowledge that we are on Treaty VII land. I'm on Treaty VII land. The original name is Mulkinstess, which means "where two rivers meet."
And you've been a council member for how long, Drew?
19 years.
Wow, good for you. You've stuck it out. Okay. All right, let's hear from, there's some thumbs up for people that admire your patience, Drew. Okay, Kristin Longtai, let's hear from you, if we could, from Toronto.
Thank you very much, Mary. It's great to be on the panel. I would say, you know, with respect to what's happening in the city of Toronto, everything is just magnified. Toronto is obviously an economic and cultural heart of the city, but it's also an incredibly dense city. We have many people who are tenants, who live in high-rises. I would say probably 50% of our population are immigrants. We are all born from abroad. English is also not my first language, but over the years, obviously, I found okay. But I think it's important for us to just, you know, see that in big cities, oftentimes we become this regional magnet for other social ills, and not necessarily that they're all necessarily coming from other cities that sort of ring around Toronto, but we are seeing what I think is sort of a regional dump taking place in Toronto. It's not to say that Toronto didn't already have challenges around homelessness, around housing, around social, health, economic inequalities, but all of that is certainly magnified as we're seeing the pandemic take its toll. Challenges that we're seeing is no different, I think, in other parts of the country, but in Toronto, there is a big scare around Main Streets. And what happens when our small businesses collapse? And we know that they're already adapting to this new environment around e-commerce and, you know, the onslaught of big-box retail, but all of that has come to bear in a tsunami effect. So those are some of the big concerns, not just around homelessness, not just around whether or not our Main Streets will survive, but there is, I would say, largely to what Drew was just pointing to, quarantine fatigue. And the quarantine fatigue is that people have been very patient, they have all made the hard sacrifices, and they're hoping that they can come out of this. But the challenge before us is what do we come out to, and what does the new Toronto reality look like? On the heels of what happened in the US, especially in Minneapolis and the murder of George Floyd, we also had a very unfortunate incident and a loss of a young black woman, 29 years old, Regis Korczynski-Packett. She died exactly two days after Mr. Floyd saw his unfortunate demise. And over this past weekend, literally 5,000 people took to the streets in Toronto to protest anti-black racism. They asked for systemic change. So I would say that probably magnifies up and becomes much louder, and people are just itching to have social connection, they're itching for dialogue. And clearly, all those breaks that we saw in the safety net that was magnified under this pandemic, people now want to address it urgently, which is not a bad thing.
Yeah. Sharma, you need to unmute yourself, and we'd love, there you go, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you so much.
You had to get up early. You're up the earliest this morning. We always acknowledge that you're just having your first cup of tea, whereas these folks from Central Canada are a little more highly caffeinated, so So tell us about your experience in Victoria.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Sharma K Dubal, city of Victoria, and I am now at City Hall, which is located on the homeland of Tsongas and Isqamalts people. And as some of my colleagues already have said, that, you know, our communities are dealing with the spread of the public health. And this is the time where all the community members and the business members are really looking at local governments for what actions we can take and also what type of recovery we will have, not only to protect the safety of all residents, but also ensure the well-being and the local economy. And we know that very well in cities across North America, inequalities enriched in our society and only is going to exacerbate. And we've seen that, how this public health brought the forefront of things that might have not been visible before, but now because of all these emergencies, we were able to see that. And we've seen Black Lives Matter all around North America, which is actually an opportunity to reflect the historical and contemporary realities of black people and people of color and indigenous people in this country, in cities and communities, what is the reality. And someone who's a former Rubegi, I'm a benefactor of the Freedom Movement that paved the way for equitable treatment in this country. So as a city leader, what I'm seeing is very familiar to me, because this week is my anniversary week, being in Canada eight years as a former Rubegi. So I'm familiar when it comes to uncertainty, and I'm familiar when it comes to the new norm, because, you know, Rubegis, they move from place to place and restart over. So to me, this is very, I'm comfortable with this, but it's how do I communicate that with the rest of the community as there is so much distress and fear? Because a lot of people have lost their jobs, people are not able to pay their rents, businesses shutting down now, restaurants are opening. So yeah, all this uncertainty, how do you assure the public and the community? We're all in this together, and we're going to move and pull each other. So this is, as a local government. And one other thing I'm seeing is the communication with intergovernmental. And I think this is the time that all other levels of government invest a local level so that they invest on everyday people. I'll leave to that for now.
Thanks, Sharma K. Interesting, your comments about refugees being more familiar with uncertainty and having and there are good sides and bad sides to that. I'm sure it's triggering all sorts of horrible trauma memories for people, but as you suggest, there's more familiarity that these journeys can happen. Whereas there are lots and lots of Canadians who have never experienced anything like this, and they're young perhaps, and they don't have parents. My parents are dead, but they lived through World War II. I heard about the depression, I heard about challenges. Many, many people have no experience of this in their direct lives. Now they do, you know. Okay, Emily, we're going at the end to you. So we have three folks here for whom English was not the first language. Isn't that fantastic? Drew, unless you're holding out on me, I think you're an Anglophone.
Sadly.
It's all right. All right, Emily, let's hear from you in Montreal.
Yeah, thank you very much for having me. From Montreal, as you said, really, I think cities are in the front lines of this health crisis, because we are in direct contact with the population, the local organisms, and the small businesses that make the life of the city. But at this moment, almost all decisions need to be approved by public health authority. It's a great change in our way to make decisions. And cities are not responsible for the public health messages. Yet the pandemic really highlighted the importance for the city councillors as us, mayor, as public health ambassadors. We are talking about public health every day. And cities are not responsible for many facets of social housing, economy, homelessness. But we had to find solutions quickly to address really growing concerns in the city, because we live in it and we see it, and people want solutions, so we have to work. We work in close collaboration with the Public Health Agency, but as a city, we put a lot of resources, money, but human resources to have this problem solved. But life continues and democracy continues. So we at City Council of Montreal, we are 64, and we meet by Zoom, and we take decisions, and we are livestreamed. And in my borough, I made two webinars to inform the population about ongoing projects. It's important to continue the link that we have with people. We are creating more bike paths and pedestrian roads so people can get around in the city safely with the sanitary measures. And now we are looking how we can reopen municipal facilities. It's not easy. We need some help, perhaps from the government. And we are seeing forwards what kind of city we want. I heard from other persons too. And it's clear for us that, well, we are thinking for a city for everyone, and this include housing, urban agriculture, strong local commercial street, sustainable mobility. And it's time now to think of these things for the life today, but for the life after COVID too.
Thank you. So you've raised so many interesting points, folks. This idea of a crisis arc, Drew, I've not actually heard that. It's almost as if there, it's almost like Kubler Ross's stages of dying. You're saying there's a euphoric thought where everybody kind of chimes in, then there's the disillusionment, and are we moving to that resignation phase? I don't know. It doesn't feel like that to me. It feels like we've had a new surge of almost outrage that is being manifested in a certain kind of way. Do you, this point that Emily just raised about public health, that you've had to work so closely with public health. And how do you folks think that your municipal councils have functioned? How effective have you been when so much that's going on actually isn't under your jurisdiction or control? Thoughts on how you've, because I don't think very many municipal workers have spent any time saying, oh, we can't do that emergent, we can't meet that emergency because it's not in our jurisdiction. My sense is that you've just been doing whatever needed to be doing, eh?
Yes, and we counted on municipal employees so engaged, and so they wanted to help, and they did, you know, some little things that never can be done because it wasn't possible. Well, it was possible now. So really, the creativity, the work, it's so encouraging. And I think that we have to say it, because people and population probably, they don't see how much work is done by local employees. And it's so important. And with the government, at some points, we said, but okay, perhaps it's not to us to do it, but we will do it. We will help, we have some local resources that we will put on this issue, because if not, it will just
Not get done.
get worse.
Yeah, I'm just going to encourage people on the chat to direct your comments to all panelists and attendees. There's a toggle switch at the bottom of the chat box that lets you do that, so that everyone sees what you're saying. That's people like you, Steve Winkelman, if you could put your comment to all panelists and attendees. So can I hear from some of your colleagues, other councillors, here about the extent to which you feel that your, has your level of government, your order of government, been able to do what it needs to do? And now, of course, you're short of dough. We're hearing that. Kristin, do you want to take it from here?
Yeah, I'd like to add something to that. I mean, and certainly, Emily, I recognize that cities are responding, and we're doing it in ways where we just have to, whether it's because of provincial or federal downloading over the years, or some unequal payments and perhaps underfunding, cuts of services that have just been, through the years, of decades, of just sort of coming down on cities. I know that the city of Toronto, which is, you know, we don't generally get involved with mental health services. We would not necessarily get involved with supportive housing, not in a front-loaded way. We are now having these conversations about delivering different types of healthcare, different types of mental health supports, trying to get in front of the housing problem that is really unsustainable for any city, unless you have federal and provincial participation. And the big challenge that we have in the city of Toronto, I think, is that a lot of folks, you know, not necessarily want to give Toronto a lot, because we generally are viewed as this economic engine, which we are, but at the same time, like I mentioned at the very beginning, is that we become this regional drawl, this regional magnet. So it does feel like, right now, our Board of Health, and I happen to be the vice chair of the Board of Health, we are responding to every single crack in the social safety net. And a recent motion that was moved from our Board of Health meeting almost read like a laundry list of requesting the province and the federal government to literally do their job. Item after item was citing the things that we needed in order for us to deliver our service, the things that we were hoping that they could invest in in order for the city to sort of get to a better equitable outcome, to help people with respect to, you know, whether it's safe supply for those who are dependent on drugs, or whether it's about making sure that there's adequate mental health supports. It just kept going back to, we are struggling to do so much as a city, and yet if we don't have that meaningful, sustainable, intergovernmental cooperation that has to extend post-COVID, everything that we have now learned and that has been magnified under the pandemic is going to get that much worse. If we think that right now things are bad, I think the recovery is going to be worse if we don't have all orders of government getting together and really engaging deep, meaningful dialogue and a structural rethinking on how do we work to with one another. And if they don't necessarily want to do the work, then I think that we need to reset the formula. Maybe it's cities, large cities like Montreal, like Toronto, that have to really get involved with the mental health services. Same thing with supportive housing. If they don't want to necessarily do it, or they think it's a Toronto problem or a Montreal problem, Calgary problem, big city problem, then give those big cities more power, more ability to respond to our local communities, and definitely the tools that allow us to perhaps raise some additional dollars.
You know, Kristin, there's an argument, some folks are talking about it in the chat, about why wouldn't cities take those responsibilities on? Because, and as long as they have a funding source to do it. Because the dilemma for a citizen now, or a resident, because we're not all citizens, or residents in urban environment, is if things are screwing up, it's very difficult to know which level to hold accountable, because you all do tend to blame each other, just saying. So it's a question of how willing are you as city council members? How willing are you to be empowered to then take the responsibility and be held accountable? Drew, I'm sure this is a very spirited conversation in Calgary, because you have a particular dynamic at the moment with your provincial government and with the federal government. So can you tell us a little bit about how Calgary's been navigating this relationship with public health and all the jurisdictional challenges you've already got there?
Well, I think our relationship with public health has been very collegial and cooperative. We do have an austerity provincial government right now, and as we have learned, austerity doesn't work in the middle of a crisis. Now we really know why government is important, and that is antithetical to the philosophy of our provincial government, but they're forced to respond. I think the city of Calgary recognizes that we know what our citizens need and would love the ability to help them, but we have very limited power to do it. What we are noticing, though, and we saw this during the 2013 flood, is the ability for the city to respond in a really creative way, super nimble. We forget about the silos and just fix things. And what you see is we were learning so much, there's often a push to, you know, that bureaucratic response very quickly. You snap back, and we need to resist this, and so whatever we
How do you do that? I mean, Emily was saying things that were seen as impossible, all of a sudden, hey, funny that how do we, how do you keep that nimbleness that you've been demonstrating, I wonder? Any thoughts on, in Calgary, how are you going to keep that?
I think it's a tough one, because there's a real desire to go back to normal. We'd have to sort of recognize that normal isn't good anymore, and
Normal wasn't working for a lot of people. I mean, that's part of what we're seeing in the streets, right?
Yeah, and not everyone is suffering from this differently. Some people are wanting a haircut, and other people don't have food on the table or don't have a home. And so I think that's going to be the struggle, is how quickly certain elements of our society want to push back to the old normal, and we need to resist that. It is going to be a conversation, I hope we have a nation, is what was the role of cities in confederation? Because we're dealing with a rural, farm-based constitution, and cities do not have the ability to raise their own revenue and deal with their own problems.
How many of you have laid folks off? Have each of your municipalities laid folks off? I know Calgary has, Toronto, you didn't hire recreation workers, I think, and contracted workers. What about you, Sharma K? Did Victoria lay people off?
As of now, we only, there was casual workers, the on-call workers. Those, we've given them two weeks' pay, but we're going to have a discussion about that weeks coming. So as of now, we haven't laid off. But I really want to add to the point that we were talking about working with all levels of government. And the British Columbia, we have a good relationship when it comes to the provincial government. And particularly, I want to talk about the case where there was a lot of unhoused people at our parks because of the housing crisis was way before the COVID-19, and the overdose was also there before this crisis. And then the province really acted immediately and took an action. And that was really a good move in terms of matching need response for unhoused community members. And hopefully, that will lead to permanent housing in the future. So there were two, Bandura, there was a street near the City Hall, and there was a particular park, which is called Topaz Park. But also, there was other parks, but the province only concentrated two areas. And the challenge was, and the concern I particularly had, was the order to house the people was a public safety order. So which seemed punitive, and so let's respond to different from a health, safety order? Because as we know, public safety order will reinforce, criminalize the people who already criminalized, unhoused and homeless people, and open us up to greater risk. And that was always my biggest fear, so And that was always my biggest fear. So the level, then other people were left at, at other parks. What we did is, at the police budget, there was allocated money that we didn't, the police didn't use, such as nightlife, you know, events, rallies and things like that. There was allocation for funding for that, the police that didn't use. So we took some of that funding, then allocated to house unhoused people and sanitation and other things to support folks who are the most vulnerable in our community.
Emily, did you, have you laid people off in Montreal?
We tried not to. So perhaps some seasonal personal, but we really wanted to keep all our, our people. It was important for us. It's a, a decision we made. And we are having a plan to reduce a little bit the budget of the municipality, $125 million. But we cut a little bit, as it was said before, not the, the people working and not the essential needs or even service to residents. So things, we, we tried to cut things that we will not do in this year because of the COVID. It's, it's a difficult effort, but we think that we have to, to do this. But not so much because we have to receive some, some help from the government. Because as you know, a city cannot have a discalibrate budget. We have to go to the year and to be at the same level of municipal taxes. And this is quite difficult. And some people perhaps don't really understand it because we are seeing federal and provincial government announcing programs and programs and so many money. And it's important. But we at the municipal level, we cannot do this. We don't have this financial power. We don't have this. So we have to do other things.
Yeah, I mean, it is a weird kind of state, you know, if, if someone from outer space came and watched the way that, that the Canadians live and saw that 83 or 4% of them lived in certain environments, but that the resources available to make that quality of life in that environment were now actually under the control of the people that were governing it, I think people would say it's kind of weird, you know? And here, here, go ahead, Kristin. I mean, you're, you're in a situation, folks, where you, you are on the front lines. You're needing more resources and you're having to, you're having to line up behind every other specific group in the country for some kind of, what's being characterized as a handout or a bailout. It's a strange thing. Kristin, go ahead.
It is. And I think, you know, coming back to the point of, you know, who's responsible for what service, who's responsible legislatively? You know, if we don't have accountability from the other orders of government to do what they're supposed to do, then all of that is going to fall into neighborhoods, into parks, into, under the bridges. This is just a reality. One principle that I think that, you know, is, is worthy of exploration is, is something, is a school of thought that comes out of the indigenous community. And that is that if an indigenous child is in need of housing, shoes, food, whoever finds that child, feeds that child, puts clothes on that child's back, educates the child and, and, you know, houses them. So then we sort out the, the bills and we sort out the, the components afterwards. And I think that, you know, so much of our, our sort of intergovernmental bickering comes from who's responsible. The city of Toronto operates, obviously, the largest public transit system in, in Canada, one of the largest ones in, in North America. We are forecasting about a $520 million shortfall between now and Labor Day, obviously because of the fall of ridership, because of the cost of maintaining the service. And we hear from the federal provincial governments that it's their fault. It's their problem. Somebody else should go pick up the bill. And so we're, we're kind of, we're going to be stuck with a potential best case scenario deficit of $1.5 billion to potentially $2.8 billion at the end of this year, simply because of our COVID response. We are not in a position at this point in time, while lives are at stake, while we're trying to defend people from falling into further homelessness, a state of precarious unrest. We're not going to be able to sort out who is responsible right now because, because of this, because of this activity. All we need to do is make sure that we keep our citizens, our residents safe, housed, that they have the food that they need, and that, and that we are going to not advocate and walk away from our responsibility, but rather step up and do more. So I do think that, you know, if we don't get to the other side of the pandemic, where we have this conversation about what does the new world order look like? What does democratizing the economy look like with real people involvement? Getting citizens to help co-create the solutions that get us out of the COVID-19, you know, induced lockdown recession. We're not going to be able to look at Canada as a prosperous, you know, well-to-do nation. Because we would have actually brought ourselves down by not getting together to get to a solution on moving forward and becoming globally competitive again. And, and these are really challenging conversations that cities can't do it by themselves. And when I get together with councillors, you know, just like, just like these, these fine colleagues, we usually nod in agreement of what we need. We all know what we need. We just don't necessarily get the same love of support. In, in Ontario's case, you know, you know, I, I just love the fact that Victoria's got support from the provincial government to help them address their homelessness. Premier Ford in Ontario hasn't, has barely said a word around homelessness and he hasn't put in any additional money around homelessness. So the fact that the BC government is going into work with Victoria directly, wow, that's, that's amazing. Good for you. But that's not our reality here. And, and that means that we have to respond to the 90 encampments that are happening across the city. The city just has to do the job and we have to sort out the bills later.
And there's an argument about those encampments diminishing the economic viability of the city as well as being, putting those particular individuals at total risk. There's, I was speaking this morning with a business leader who was lamenting this and, you know, the dilemma is who has, who's got the resources and the tools to create the solution to the, to these challenges, right? Were you going to say something, Shamika?
Yeah, I, I, I really appreciate something Christine said in terms of the transit. Because we know that when the public community, our constituents, community members want to access opportunity, there is two things. There's financial costs and there is environmental costs. So now we see in the revenue of the, for the transit falling and the ridership because our regional, because I'm on the regional transit commission, I'm a commission. And it was free, fair free until first of June. So that means we've lost a lot of revenue. So the question right now is, the federal government, what are they going to rescue? Are they going to rescue dying businesses? Or, or, or things that will really, is in the future and also will help everyday people? For instance, for the transit. Transit will also help us at the local level to do a good local planning decisions such as bus lanes. And if we have a good, reliable, fast and convenient transit, people won't rely, a lot of people won't rely on cars. So that limits how much of road maintenance we'll do. That will also save some money for the cities. But also it will increase the wellbeing and the health. So, and also would increase the opportunities. A mother could take her children to playground or to school. Sinners will visit their friends. So the problem is, what would the federal government put money in and what are they going to support? Because if they really invest at the local government, at local level, they invest in everyday people.
Just the, the dilemma is what Drew hinted at here earlier is that the terms of the constitution make it difficult for the federal government to actually do that. I'm, I'm interested, folks, in, you're talking about the city we want. And you're talking about the constraints you have at the moment to actually achieve the city we want. And there are some areas where you do have authority. And one of them that surfaced on the chat very early and is very much on people's minds right now is policing. And how, how does policing need to change? Am I not right that this is actually something that is in your jurisdiction? And that you do have the, you do have the powers to impact?
I think there, there's a limit to, we have a provincial police act in Alberta. And so city council can't interfere on how the police deploy themselves. We can really only determine their budget. Thankfully, Calgary has quite a civilianized police service and we use the word service proudly, not force. And with a pretty good relationship with Calgarians. But I think it's all, it's the largest, and I'm surprised if other cities wouldn't be the same. By far, the largest part of our operating budget is the police service.
And can you, do you imagine, do you have a window? I mean, there are people here asking about defunding police. They're asking about how you can prioritize different kinds of efforts and capacity and resources within your police service? Any other thoughts on how you're imagining that? Yes, go ahead, Shamika.
Yeah, I, I'm new on council and, and I got elected 2018. But the question I have is, when we define public safety, we have to go back and visit that, what public safety is and redefine that. If we invest youth at risk and preventative things, is that public safety? So I think that is what we need to do. And for, for instance, as I said earlier, we took some money which were for nightlife and things like that. Some money that the police didn't already use and relocated for sanitation and, and house people. So for me, I, I am for the thought of to revisit what policing look like. And, and, and look in the whole system.
I mean, obviously, there may be the way, you know, I think people are, are hungry for, you were saying itching, Kristin, for dialogue. I think people are hungry for leadership that's suggesting what this better normal could be. And I'm wondering if you as city councillors have, if you're at a vantage point where you can provide that leadership. And if, in addition to policing, go ahead, Emily, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, as what said, we, we have regards on budget. But as city councillors, we cannot tell the police to do so, to do one thing or another. So it's, there is always a line that's a bit difficult to manage with. And we have to be, there are things that we can do and others know. But what we did in Montreal, since Valérie Plante, the mayor of Montreal is there, we opened the security commission. We have some commissions and we have one on public security. And we opened it. We have 10 public sessions a year. This wasn't really the case before. So we, as city councillor, but as the public too, can discuss with police from different aspects, different subject, almost once a month. And this is really helpful because we can discuss some difficult subjects sometimes between the touch and, for example, the relationship between police and the neighborhoods and people. Yes.
Go ahead, Kristin.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I really appreciate what my colleagues across the country are saying. So absolutely, it is, it is, we all recognize that politicians don't get to necessarily direct the police. But at the same time, there is some direction that's given. So for example, right now, we know that a lot of our officers are going out to basically police in public spaces around physical distancing. This is something that the mayor has asked them to do and so they're off doing that. You know, with respect to what can we do to build safer communities? We recognize that the social determinants of health are almost identical to the social determinants of safety. So if we invest in communities, if we invest in, in, in youth, if we invest in, in neighborhoods, we can build safer cities. I think the, the challenge for us at, at this point in time is that the police budget has become a highly politicized debate. It is, it is not neutral. When I hold budget town halls and oftentimes I get, I get 150 residents come out talking about how they want to spend their money, how they want city council to spend their money. They often talk about investment in youth employment. They talk about making sure that the communities have recreational social services so that they can support themselves and become resilient and strong. And when I talk to frontline officers, our neighborhood officers are the ones that sort of patrol the area. They sort of build relationships ongoing with those community members. They will say, councillor, we would love to see more money go into mental health support. They have said they want to see more money go into housing, more money go into supportive housing. But there's a, there's a position around the police, especially for the higher up with the brass and the association, is that it becomes extremely combative. And if we can bring more residents into the discussion around the budget and the budget process and how we make the decision, we're actually going to get better budgets. And, and budget processes at the city, and this is where it's critical to have citizen involvement. Because when they come out and participate in those budget discussions, there's a very good chance that we're going to get different direction. As opposed to left with the political actors all on their own in the council chamber. Which is why I oftentimes want to pursue and push the conversation further around democratizing our economies. Because we need to have more people involvement in our financial decision-making. And we all recognize that the budget is the apex of every single policy tool. Everything, every single plan, service, strategy has to have a budget line. And so, you know, Mary, you, you raised a point, you know, do we have a lot of say? Yes, well, obviously we have a green button and a red button. We all get to push it multiple times. But if we don't get more citizens involved, then it really is only 25 people in the city of Toronto council chambers that have a say. And I would rather have 3 million residents telling us how we should go about doing our business and with their active and sustained involvement.
Again, you know, I wonder if COVID gives you an opportunity to really bring home to people how critical the municipal services are that they rely on. They may not even have realized prior that it was the municipality that was providing a service. Or if a, or if a particular outcome isn't there, if there isn't enough affordable housing in your neighborhood, who do you actually hold accountable for that? That's one of the dilemmas, I think. We need to, if you want to democratize the economy, then citizens and residents need to understand why it matters that they get engaged, right?
It also allows other governments, and I'll just stop at this point, it also allows other governments to, to participate in a much more accountable way. And, and I think that's one of the, the key things that are missing is that we all turn to one another and say it's your, your fault or your responsibility. But by democratizing the, the economy, it, it actually allows us all to sit at the table and to participate as equal stakeholders in, in some ways. So therefore, it's not cities going to the province or the federal government for this bailout, but rather, how do we actually co-design our solutions to the problems that we all inherit that are all before us together? And it's, it's way more accountable and transparent.
And you know, the interesting thing about this, well, there's so many things, but the pandemic has affected every community. It's a global event and so it's not confined by geography. But then everybody's experience is so different, as we've suggested. And if we were to imagine an order of government that's going to have the best intel, the best information about what the actual impacts are, it's actually you, right? You're actually now the data source for what it really looked like on the ground. And as you spend your next, we know the 19th of June is, is 100 days of COVID. And we're going to mark that with a series of consultations across the country to try to get a sense of what's going on in places. As you sort of imagine the summer months, do you have a sense of what your priorities are going to have to be? do you have a sense of what your priorities are going to have to be? Um, uh, to, to the next phase, whatever the next crisis arc is? Why don't we ask you first Drew? Do you have a sense of what the summer bodes for Calgary and for your involvement, leadership in it?
Uh, well, I, I think there, there are a whole bunch of areas that we're going to have to pay attention to.
You have a priority? Can you pick a few or no?
Well, I, I, my area is the downtown as well. It, it, we have to choose a whole bunch of priorities because they are all inter, intermixed uh, and interconnected. We, we are starting to ease restrictions. There's a worry about a second wave. We need to be prepared for that. Um, there's a real concern that we're going to lose the small businesses and retailers that, that really help define the character of a city. How do we, how do we help them and ensure that they, um, they can survive and hopefully thr- thrive into the future? When we were first entering into, into, uh, an isolation, we, uh, the city had arranged a number of hotels for people in the homeless shelters to move into. And the province over, overrode that and, and chose some, a shelter situation which, which thankfully we haven't had significant outbreaks. We need to talk about, about our seniors and, and long-term care and how, how we can help that situation.
But that's a perfect example where municipal government had it, who, who ostensibly had the best vantage point, had a solution and the provincial government overcalled you. So there'll be interesting illustrations that potentially municipal governments will be able to draw to say here's where our lack of autonomy or lack of authority or lack of resources prevented us from doing the right thing.
So I think the, the inequities of our, our political system have really been exposed. It, it as like the inequities of our citizenry. And will, will we have the bravery and the guts to do anything about it? I certainly hope so. Because, uh, if we just go back to the way things were, then we'll have failed as a society. When the inequities have been so, so exposed to us.
Yeah, no turning back.
Can't ignore them anymore.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. No turning back. Emily, and then I'll come to you others.
Yes, um, I would talk about two things for the summer. Uh, we in Quebec, uh, everybody is moving on the first of July. Well, not everybody, but people that are moving us. And, um, uh, it's difficult in Montreal for housing to, to see an affordable housing. And with the pandemic, it's a little bit complicated more. So we asked for five million dollars, uh, for the government, uh, of Quebec to, um, for a plan for help us. But we, uh, did some, we had a plan at the city how to deal with it. So we have a hotline and we have people that are working with the people that see they will not be able to have their house on the first of July. So we are really engaged on a plan for this moving day and it's really important. And the, on the other side, we think that many people in Montreal will stay in Montreal for the, all the the, the summer. So we are, uh, implanting a plan with bike lanes and pedestrian street to link all the great parks in Montreal. Because we have a lot of great parks in Montreal. And, uh, we want people to discover all these parks uh, in, um, sustainable transportation, so going by bike or, uh, on the public transportation too. So we have local parks and we do something in local parks. And we will reopen some, uh, municipal facilities as the government said we, we can open it. Uh, but we had this play, this, this plan of two hundred and fifteen kilometers of new bike path or pedestrian street. We have also some, uh, commercial, uh, pedestrian street that, that, the merchants, they, they wanted, um, to do it in their streets. So we are working some, with some association that want it to, uh, to, 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 to experiment to live this thing in the summer. So we, we are working so people can, uh, get, um, a, a, a summer, an exciting almost summer in Montreal. We want people to, uh, there will be some, um, animation and some, some art in these, uh, bike path, for example, going, uh, from a park to another. So people can do tourism in their own city and to be free, to be safe. And working at the same time with local businesses to see how they can, um, survive this pandemic with local people, uh, going, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to their, um, to their commerce. So, uh, we have this plan of Montreal, uh, this, uh, this summer.
It, it, it's, uh, I don't know if other people across the country realize that the lease system in Quebec is that every lease, residential leases turn over on the same day, Glaafers. I learned that from friends who were at university years ago. So it has an extra challenge for you and also this leadership that you've been able to take to connect your assets, all these wonderful neighborhood assets that you have into a network to encourage a staycation. In English, it's called a staycation. Uh, and, uh, isn't that interesting to, to, and I wonder if any of that may actually be, end up being more permanent? Maybe it won't just be temporary.
Oh, I think so.
Perhaps.
Yeah, interesting, interesting. Okay, uh, Charmack, I will come to you, then I wanna go to Kristen and back to Drew. Go ahead Charmack.
Thank you very much. So for us, we've, uh, deferred the property tax and we will hear and receive in August. So a lot of our programs in the city strategic that we had from housing to, uh, equity framework from, uh, from infrastructure, uh, so that will be referred to August and we will be discussing. For now, we've taken quick measurements such as having Victoria Recovery Re-Invention Resilience. Uh, also having open air recovery, uh, supporting for restaurants and cafes in public spaces. Supporting recovery art and culture sector, which I wouldn't go to details. But also increasing physical distance for pedestrians in public spaces and neighborhoods. Because, you know, most of our sidewalks is, is designed for two people. So now we had to think about how to increase that. And also extending for the parking, commercial zones and and business plan and recovery grant programs, housing security programs. One of the things we did is a food security program as well. And, and safe and supervised, uh, indoor, uh, for folks unhoused. And also we were working closely the hospitality industry. And, and also recovery for, for low carbon immunity. So we, we doing all this and until hopefully August. Then in August, we would revisit and all the other bigger project that we had. And we'll see how things fall.
It's, it's interesting sometimes to imagine what it would be like if money weren't constraining you. Or if you had your own capacity to raise the money and be accountable directly for it, what would you be doing? Um, thanks Charmack, I, I hear you. Interested how many of these things you guys are gonna try, you may end up finding a way to make stick. Okay, uh, Kristen.
Um, well, Toronto's not exactly in the clear yet. While we still are disproportionately having, um, active cases that are continuing to be reported. Uh, last count is about eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-eight. We've got, and that's, that's, that's our today's number. Uh, we also have, um, a hundred and forty-nine active outbreaks in long-term care facilities and other places in a congregate settings. Um, so I don't think we're, we're going to be, um, uh, we're gonna be cautiously, uh, watching. And I think we're going to be monitoring, uh, to make sure that we can be responsible and, and slowly lift the veil on the economy uh, and be able to bring people back. Um, and I think that in Ontario, we, we
Can you, can you explain for a national audience why Toronto has been not as adventurous and let's say as Montreal in terms of, or Calgary in terms of opening streets? And it's, if some people perceive Toronto to have been quite slow on that, can you give us a sense of why?
Yeah, I mean, we're following the advice of our medical officer of health. Um, and they, that, that team is working, uh, from the emergency operations center at the city of Toronto. They're working extremely closely, uh, with the province. Uh, and I think, you know, there are probably Ontarians, uh, that would probably want premier four to take more regional approach. Um, but Toronto is remaining, uh, to be an active, uh, sort of place of community, uh, transmission. Obviously it's disproportionately placed in these congregate settings. Um, so until our medical officer of health says, uh, you know, this is the, her best advice to us. Um, you know, everything that we're doing is actually through that public health lens. Um, and so it's not necessarily my decision. I was one of the early ones out in March that said we need to open up the streets. Uh, I'm a big promoter of active transportation. I've been running, uh, with my friends, the Open Streets Program in Toronto for seven, this is our seventh year. Um, so this is not something that I necessarily fully agreed with. But at the same time, uh, she didn't wanna necessarily send out mixed messages to Torontonians. Uh, and we have seen some results where, for example, thousands of people gathered in Trinity Park, a very popular park downtown, where there was zero physical distancing. Um, and, and, you know, there's, there's some anticipation that, you know, those type of events would set us back. Um, so I think Dr. Devilla, our medical officer of health, is giving us her very best advice. And that advice sort of has to guide us through as we, uh, you know, take, take the attempts to reopen the economy. Um, and you know, as Emily is talking about the two hundred and fifteen kilometers of cycling lane in Montreal, I can just like, my God, that's exciting. Um, in the city of Toronto, um, of, of equal proportions of excitement, I guess, for, by Toronto standards. This is a city that loves cars. And, uh, and so our car-loving city and our car-loving council just approved twenty-five accelerated, uh, kilometers of cycling lane to be installed this summer. And for the city of Toronto, that brings us to a grand total of forty, forty kilometers this year. And I'll tell you, that is historic in this, in the city. So it's a different environment. Um, I work with an amalgamated city. Uh, Montreal has been de-amalgimated. You guys get to respond more nimbly. I think if it was only the city core of Toronto, we could probably, you know, match your numbers. But because we work in a big amalgamated city with seven, um, seven former cities and boroughs coming together, um, I have to please a lot of suburban, um, colleagues as well. Um, so we're going to be watching and carefully, I think, opening the economy. And, and, you know, we have to do this with the advice of our medical officer of health. Um, and there are some businesses that have been just crying because of the phasing of fact that, you know, I cannot do curbside delivery, uh, for example, of, um, an atmosphere in a bar nightclub. I represent the gay village in Toronto. Uh, a lot of the things that we do are in congregate settings. That's how money comes together. That's how we gather in safe spaces. Um, and that is not going to happen. Um, and some of those businesses are in the basement, some of them don't have second floor access. And they are not gonna have the ability to curbside access. Nor will they have the ability to create, um, participate in the, in the patio cafe culture that we're hoping to accelerate this summer. Um, so we have to be able to figure out how to open the economy that allows for more participation and to think about those businesses and those individuals who are, who are left behind. And that requires, I would say, again, almost a block by block, um, um, a block by block input. And so citizens can come out and actually do more with their streets if we gave them more of that power, which is what I have been advocating for, for almost all my time at council.
Very quick last word to you Drew and Magri.
I, I, I think we're, we're seeing some bright lights of really creative ways that citizens are responding. And sometimes cities just need to get out of the way and let them do their thing. We've seen curbside concerts and, um, photographers doing portrait, uh, uh, photographs on people's porches. So I, I think we need to draw on that creativity and the sharing of streets is something that that cities have been talking about for so many years and now we're being forced to, to do it. What, what we can keep at the end of this is, I think, what will help define us. And I, I really love what Kristen is saying about democratizing the economy. We need to look at, at, uh, what kind of society do we want when this is over? And it'll take a while for it to actually be over if it ever really is. And so there's, there are lessons here and let's, let's keep our minds open and learn from them.
Well, thank you. Thanks to all four of you for sharing from your perspective. As we suggested on the ground perspective, you have constituents to whom you're accountable, you have colleagues that you work with. You have a framework, a constitutional framework from eighteen sixty-seven in which you have to operate. So thank you so much for a number of things you've said, serious things, inspirational things, things for us to pay attention to, what's gonna stick. Um, and as you just suggested there Drew and others have echoed, what happens now is going to define us. It's going to define the cities that we want collectively. So I just, I know on behalf of all of us, we thank Emily, Charmack, Kristen and Drew for joining us from your seats. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, uh, having conversations with you as we continue to live cities in the time of COVID. On Thursday, we come back to City Talk and we're gonna talk about the powerful role of art and culture. Uh, and then on Friday, I'm with the mayor of Ottawa. So, uh, really appreciate people coming in and, uh, tuning in and look for us online. It'll be posted later. Thanks again, everybody. Really glad to have you.
I enjoyed everyone's ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.